Welcome. I welcome you to the July eighteenth City Council meeting in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. We will begin with the invocation by Pastor Debbie Powell Maxwell of the First Christian Church and be followed by the flag salute. Ms. Maxwell.
It is from Psalm one twenty-seven that we hear these words, unless the Lord guards the city, the guard keeps watch in vain. Let us pray. Creator God, with stilled thoughts and contrite hearts, we come seeking your guidance and strength this day. You know the many needs of this city, and you know our blessings as well. We ask now for a sharing of your grace so that we can move confidently in this meeting and boldly employ our gifts to address the challenges of our times. May our gathering today be marked by patience, by careful listening, and by a deep and abiding respect and affection for all the people we serve. May we stand for each other. May we stand for Yukon. May we stand with you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call off, please.
McCarron.
Here.
Smysterla.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Yanda.
Are there any presentations or proclamations?
Not denied, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. This is the visitor section where anyone who wishes to come before the council and speak on a non-agended item, they may come forward and address the council. Do we have anyone at this time?
I've not been given any notification.
All right, we'll now recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A, YMA consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve. The minutes of the regular meeting of July the sixth, two thousand and seventeen be the notice of exercise of option to extend the municipal solid waste landfill disposable service contract with Oklahoma City Waste Disponing, a waste connections of Oklahoma Company through September the thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
That's a second. A motion in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Item two A, consider a motion to reject the bids and authorize the purchasing agent to re-advertise to receive bids for solid waste landfill disposal services. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item three A, consider entering into a water tower communications agreement with Samaritan EMS to install, maintain, operate, and remove radio communications equipment and appurtenances on the Vandement Avenue Water Tower located at sixteen fifty West Vandement Avenue as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item four A, consider and take action with respect to Resolution YMA two thousand seventeen dash five, a resolution authorizing the Yukon Municipal Authority, known as the Authority, to issue its sales tax revenue note, series two thousand seventeen, in the aggregate principal amount of ten million dollars. Waiving competitive building bidding and authorizing the two thousand seventeen note to be sold at a price of par by negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title sixty Oklahoma Statutes, Section one seventy-six, authorizing and approving documents, procedures, and payments related to the issuance of the two thousand seventeen note, providing that trust indenture shall be subject to provisions of the two thousand seventeen note, authorizing and directing the execution of the two thousand seventeen note and other documents relating to the transaction, including professional services agreements and containing other provisions relating hereto. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, do we want to, Mr. Kendrick, you want to step up there and go over this with us a little bit, please?
Chris Kendrick with Bank of Oklahoma Financial. You have Bill Strucker, my associate, Nate Ellis, Public Finance Law Group. John Williams would normally be here, but he had a personal matter, sent his regrets, had to be out of town for a funeral. So with that, we were here June twentieth, and at that time, you guys authorized us to go out and seek bids on this ten million dollar note. Instead of doing a bond issue, we're doing a private placement note. The final maturity was about fourteen years out, so we put bid packets together, sent those out to your local banks, regional, national banks, and had bids due today at eleven o'clock to correspond with this meeting tonight. At eleven o'clock, we received two bids, BB and T, which had won a bid previously a couple of years ago, and they provided two options, and it has to do with your prepayment, we'll go back to that, and their second bid was bank first. So specifically on each of the bids, BB and T, option one, it's two point five six percent, and you could prepay at any time with a one percent penalty or premium. I left a letter out on that sheet in front of you, by the way, typo. And then option two, same rate, and you can prepay anytime after January first of twenty-five at par. And then bank first was prepayable at any time without any penalty at three point three percent. Based on when we're looking about you guys kind of delaying some of the principal being paid and everything else, I don't really think you're going to be prepaying this, certainly not before January first of twenty-five. So our recommendation is to accept BB and T bid of two point five six, which we're calling option two, which is prepayable at par anytime after January first of twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
You want the council? Richard? John?
I, not so much for you, but I do the city manager, if that's at this point. I know what you've showed us and what we've went over for months on this, but the public might not, on paying this back with how the income for the city has been down, do you see any problem on making payments on this? I'm sure the public's going to want to know this.
No, sir, and in our budget, we had previously included this in our budget, and this would cut, we do have funds presently in our, this year's budget to begin payments, and without a problem. I know the mayor had asked me also to discuss what the projects would be, this money would be utilized for. And I will say, these are, these are the projects that are locked in to this. The amounts, to some degree, are a little bit of an estimate till you get a bid in on the project, but the first project costs a State Highway four, which is a bridge, a fifteen hundred foot bridge that will replace, and roadway improvements to replace the three bridges that are presently in place. This will be moved to the west of the present alignment, and this is approximately two hundred eighty, two million eighty-one thousand dollars. And this is for design, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, and right-of-way again. And then we have the, some funds for the I forty interchange, and this is for design, and this is a total of five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Vandement Avenue realignment, and this road has to be realigned in order to get ready for the I forty interchange. It has to be moved further to the north, and it'll be just north of the water tower that's being constructed at the present time. And this is design, utility relocation, and construction, and that's almost a million six. The Frisco Road improvement, which would be five lane by the water tower, and then it will go to four lanes and to the interchange of sixty-six is a half mile, and that's a little, about approximately three hundred, one hundred thousand dollars, three million one hundred thousand. The two buildings were being built presently by the location, and one is Public Works for the storage facility and also for the department maintenance of streets, and that's seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And then we have some Yukon Road projects that'll be a little over a million dollars, and then we have a contingency mainly for right-of-way and what have you of nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. That contingency, again, cannot be spent or handled unless it's brought before the council for your approval.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Are there any other, any other questions?
I have one question, just, just, Chris, you can probably help. It says waive competitive bidding in here. Explain, because people ask about that, why do we waive the competitive bidding?
Sure, and so, as you can see, we, we sent out a bid packet, and there were bids, but there's a very regulated process if you go through an official competitive bidding, and that's really designed for general obligation bond issues. So if you guys do general obligation bonds, and you have in the past, we have sold those through a official competitive process, and that's where we have to publicize it in the paper so many weeks in a row. So while we, while we did waive competitive bidding, we did go through a competitive process to get the best rate we could get for the city.
And what process? Was it advertised?
We send out bid packets to any banks that we are aware of, all your local banks, all the regional banks, and then all the national banks, and we're consistently in the market. We know the banks that are interested in ours, and we send it to a lot of the banks we know aren't interested, just in case things do change. So we have a bid list that we continuously send it out to, and anybody that wants to be added to it, we add, and we always are careful to include any local banks.
And just for people that might be watching, remind the community, what role do you all pay, what role do you play on behalf of our community?
So Bank of Oklahoma Financial Securities is the financial advisor, so in that relation, a fiduciary responsibility to do what we think's in the best interest. We're on your side of the table in negotiations with the bank, representing the city, and the bond council, Nate Ellis, Public Finance Law Group, is the people that make sure all the legal documents are done in the correct manner.
So looking for the best money, lowest rate, best?
Terms.
Terms.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's our job.
So there are no competitive bidding requirements that you're aware of that would, we need to go with in this particular case, right?
That's correct.
That we can waive that, and there's no problem with?
So once again, because revenue bonds are just revenue notes, whatever revenue financings are just substantially different than general obligations, they're just much more of a commodity that you can tax without. The attorney wants to explain it in more detail, so before he gets himself too deep into the weeds.
Okay, would you give, give us your name, please?
I'm Nate Ellis with Public Finance Law Group, and we and John Williams, his firm, are co-bond counsel for the city. You will competitively bid all of these projects. That's an entirely separate statutory structure. You'll go out and advertise for bids for construction contracts. The competitive bidding is a process Chris was describing. It's used for general obligation bonds, it has to be used for that. It does not lend itself very well to revenue-backed type transactions. So historically, all of the bond issues that you've done revenue-wise, the notes that you've done in the past, you've waived competitive bidding, and all that is, is it's a statutory provision. If you don't follow the statutory procedure for obtaining interest rate bids, then you have the ability to waive competitive bidding, and you can still approve debt, but it requires a three-fourths majority vote of the trustees of the authority and the council of the city. So what that means is four out of five, you have the ability to waive competitive bidding, and that is what is traditionally done in all revenue finances, financings by cities all across the state.
So that will be required tonight as well?
Yes, yeah, so it will require four out of four, well, yeah, four out of five are here, so all four would need to vote in order to approve the financing.
Okay.
This is competitively bid, though. It's not?
Yes.
It's not advertised, per se, and going through a thirty-day process and things. We use, notes are sent out to, in packets to the various banks and all the various financial facilities that care to bid, like you mentioned, all local banks, state banks, and a lot of people, they have a whole list of banks it goes to, and then they determine what their particular needs are and whether they desire to bid this particular issue, and we only had two on this time, which is not unusual, but sometimes we got, we've had more in the past, but.
It is a competitive process, the same packet goes to everybody, they all have to submit bids at a certain time, it just doesn't follow the statutory competitive process that applies to general obligation bonds.
But we're still going to bid every one of the projects that we designate?
Yeah, that's an entirely, you're required to do that, that's entirely, this waiver of competitive bidding has?
It's important that everybody understand that all we're doing is authorizing the money here so that we can competitively bid.
Waiver of competitive bidding has nothing to do with competitively bidding the construction projects.
They all have to be bid and follow state law.
Counselor, is, any questions on your part?
I think they've done a good job explaining it, Mr. Mayor. That's my understanding of the law, I think they're right on, and it appears that they've satisfied all the requirements.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Nate. Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item one, on the consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items which they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July the sixth, two thousand seventeen. Payment of material claims in the amount of six hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-two cents. Item C, the appointment of Velta Johnson to the Board of Spanish Coast Housing Authority for the term for office number six, expiring May the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as recommended by the nominating committee. D, denial of the claim number two zero three five eight seven dash LR from Kelly Allen for property damage as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. And item E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for August the first, two thousand and seventeen, seven P M. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item number two, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. We have a water report this evening by our city manager, Mr. Crosby.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, I would like to also add that those costs that I mentioned on these projects was not the total cost of the projects. I mean, the I forty interchange is estimated to be cost between seventeen and nineteen million. Highway four is considerable more, but these, these funds will be made up with state and federal funds that will be added to those projects to make sure that they are completed. The Vandement project and the Frisco Road projects are those that will be paid for solely by the city of Yukon. But we do get a lot of grants and monies from other projects to make sure that these are done correctly. Mr. Mayor, on our water, I wanted to explain, and a lot of people don't understand how we read meters and what have you, but we also, some people think we estimate meters, we do not estimate any meter. All meters have to be read. Our meter readers that go out, they have a, an item that they read the meters with, there is no record on that particular meter that will show them what their previous bill was or what their previous reading was. They will enter it, and they have to enter some type of reading. If it's an error, it will kick that out. So it's got to be a greater reading than what they previously had, or it won't read that particular meter. And so after they turn all their readings in for that day, it goes into a computer, and it will kick out, we, once it's entered, if anything that's an exception, abnormally high or abnormally low, and then we'll go out and reread or recheck that meter. I realize that some people don't understand that sometimes there's a delay in bill, that once they use that water, we do on a thirty-day cycle, once that meter is read, the, is then turned in, the bills go out about fifteen days later. So people don't understand that there's a considerable time that's gone by, and so it's like I was trying to explain to an individual that, you know, we'll go out and recheck your meter, and we'll do a rereading, which we do, we'll pressure check that meter if they really think there's a problem, but if the meter reads correctly before and after that reading, we don't know what the water was used for that went to that meter. All we know is the water went through it. We're like any utility customer, if that water goes through the meter, we feel people should pay for it. Electric company doesn't know how you use your electricity, nor the gas company how you use the gas, and we can't tell you how you use your water. But we do go out and try to make sure that the bills are accurate, and we do rereads, and we will go out and check for leaks if there's some, a problem there, because we want to make sure that, and we do, we can help any person that may have a problem. We also make adjustments, and we also, if you have a leak, we will take care of it. We also will go out and work with somebody if they can't pay their bill. I think there was a comment made, we don't do that. We work lots of payment arrangements with people, and we understand people sometimes have financial problems, and if they do have that, we're more than happy to work with them on a two, three-month arrangement, and if necessary, we will even go longer. So just want to let people know what's going on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Item three, consider approving ordinance one three four four, an ordinance rescinding ordinance number one three one five in its entirety of the smart code S C district regulations for land use. Smart code regulations with the urban gateway overlay district repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion?
I, I have some discussion. I guess, Mr. Crosby, I just would like to hear, I wasn't able to attend the committee meeting that recommended this and sent it over, and just some discussion. I was part of, you know, voting this in and helping to work our way through doing this, and thought it was really a good idea at the time. I've had a chance to talk with some local, I guess, investors or real estate people that say that it is maybe more of a burden than it is a benefit to the community, but I just would like to hear some discussion and, and understand why this isn't a good idea.
Well, the problems with the smart code, when it was passed, there was a lot of promises made that this was going to happen. A lot of businesses were coming to town, a lot of things were going to be, make it really easy to develop. In talking to the individuals that have the land and the property, we were approached and said this is a burden, and they'd like to see it rescinded. We met with every property owner that has this zoning, and we talked to them, and they all realized the difficulty of it, and they wanted to go back to the more traditional zoning that people could understand and that they're used to dealing with. And when you're talking about national concerns and national businesses that come in, your targets, your loads and colds, or you can talk about any of them, they understand this, the traditional type of zoning. This is a, a little bit outside that, and I, I think the people we talked to, none of them really could understand it. So in talking with all the property owners, we agreed that we would help work with them and would change it, go back to their traditional zoning. We took this to the committee, as you missed, and they approved it, took it to the planning commission, and they've approved it, and like I say, we have an agreement of all parties involved, and so it's before you tonight with the recommendation.
Committee has yet to?
Yeah.
Yeah, John, this one's before yet as well.
Yeah, I couldn't get to that meeting, I, yeah, I realize it did.
And I did attend that, and everybody that was there spoke as well that it was just a change that was needed this time, and there were several people that spoke, so.
I guess the concern of mine is, is that I'm, I guess I'm under the impression that people are not actively pursuing the development of the property out there right now, that other future people that might come and want to invest in that property, we don't know who they are. So when you say that everybody who owns the property, I mean, are those, those are potential developers, are they? Those are, those are people who are either investors or have an option? I mean, who, who is every person that owns the property? Are those?
Well, we walk, well, the people, the people that own this property, the, the church, for example, Mr. Opitz and his group, they are not only the owners of the property, but the developers of that property. And when they talk about people coming in and what their options are on this property, it's pretty vague as far as the ordinance is concerned, and, you know, they can relate to a C five zoning, you know, an R one zoning and things of that nature, and they realize what the restrictions are and, and what they are, you know, and so we spent considerable time in, in meeting with them, and, you know, and there's some things in this ordinance that I think is very bad as far as people could come in and build apartments anywhere. There, there's a lot of leeway in, in this particular zoning that, you know, that in a, it's pretty loose in some areas, in, in my opinion. And this is what, you know, the Cajun group that came in and talked to us, they talked about their difficulty tuning it, they didn't, they didn't like it from the start, and they said it cost them several hundred thousand dollars to change their plan and go through it. They brought several developers in that I met with, they didn't like the zoning, and, you know, now whether or not they, you know, we talked about changing it back, and we're hoping that this will enhance other developers to come in. A lot of this property is kind of in a limbo right now, in my opinion, that until you see the dirt start turning on the interchange of, and the people we talked to on I forty and Frisco Road project, that's going to be a great commercial enhancement for our community, but this is what they prefer doing. And so we're trying to meet that need, and I think it's a, I personally think it's a great thing to go back to the traditional zoning, and, you know, and like I say, I, I regret you couldn't be at the meetings to talk about the points, but, you know, we've met several times with many of these people, and they all agree this is, this is the way to go.
But the traditional zoning, I mean, that's what we were hoping to get away from, just black parking lots and, and just flat buildings. So I mean, with this smart code, I mean, you say apartments, it's, that's not necessarily true, Jim. I mean, there are apartments could be part of it, but it's not, it's just not an open door to build apartments through the whole property, that's not what the purpose of it.
I didn't say with the whole property.
Hold on a second, hold on. The purpose of it was to try to put some, some architecture, something? The purpose of it was to try to put some, some architecture, something, so as they build that along the highway, that it's something that's aesthetically pleasing. So what, if we vote on this and pass this, what assurance does the community have? Cause I'm not gonna be here whenever, so tonight's my only night that I get to speak my piece, so that's why I'm raising this. The reason that we did this is, is we wanted, when people drove by and looked over there and they said, wow, that's a neat looking place, I wonder what that is. And that in and of itself was even a lure to get them off, not just academy or whatever. But, so what assurance do we have going forward that there's gonna be, uh, a developer that works with the city that makes that area a showplace?
Well, I think most of the development today, um, Mr. Councilman, is a planned unit development. Under a PUD, you can make certain restrictions and what have you in regards to development, what face you would have on that, what type of, uh, trees, uh, what type of, uh, any type of thing you wanna see as far as decorations to see, to make sure that you have the kind of development that you want. Because, uh, in order to get a PUD development and what they say, you can, there are restrictions that you can, you know, make these people have on that development. Just like any housing development or anything else, it's street size, width. There's a lot of things we can do to improve that, you know? And, uh, I think one of the things, uh, if you look at, when we've allowed these people then to come in in other towns, it's like the size of a, uh, what type of sign ordinance you have, how high is it, uh, all the academies that'll come in, or you use that as an example, they have a standard store, standard signs, you know? But they do adjust in other towns. And we can require that here, if that's what they're gonna have along the highway. But, uh, you know, the, I, I just know when the other people come in and they are the developers and the people that are trying to, uh, do something a little bit different, they come in and they, they find an object, it's very objectionable and they think it's very difficult to deal with. And I know Mr. Wright, uh, and Mr. Ray Wright, and talking to him, you know, he agrees it's a problem. And the people he's talked to, which, uh, I think he's pretty cognizant of what happens, uh, agrees with that issue. And so we're, we're trying to, to do this for the best for the community. And yet we don't wanna get behind development and let everybody else pass us by. When this opens up, we're gonna have a great opportunity to do something good for our community. And sales tax is something that, you know, all towns are looking for. We operate and live and die on sales tax. But if we let other towns pass us by and these people don't wanna develop under the way we've got our zoning set up, then we're gonna be in trouble in the long term. Because once they get certain big boxes, there's only so many big boxes or big things are gonna happen around town. So, you know, I think we need to listen to what these people are telling us. And, uh, you know, when the whole group who's out trying to do it, talking about it, uh, I don't think everybody can be wrong. And that's the reason we went with this and, uh.
I understand, but they were involved in the conversation, they got it passed in the first place also. I mean, I've spoken to Ray, I mean, he was part of the vote to put it.
Yeah.
And I've spoken to him since. I, I, I agree that he's certainly an authority locally to listen to, so. I just, that's my concern. I mean, I reluctantly will, will support it, but my concern is, is that as that property develops, the last thing that I'd like to see is just a big bunch of asphalt and some yellow lines. So.
I agree with, I don't think anybody wants to see asphalt and yellow lines. We wanna see something quality and, uh, in fact, in the people that we talked to, uh, lately that I've met with out there and, uh, other people that are interested in properties, uh, they don't want any, uh, no offense, they don't want a chicken place out there. They want quality development, something different for our community, you know? And they don't wanna see a Garth Brooks Boulevard per se out there. So, I mean, you know, no offense to Garth Brooks Boulevard or anything that's happened there, but they'd like to see a, a little better type of restaurants or little type, better type of, uh, commercial ventures than what we've got there. And they wanna see something in, in a, in quality environment.
Thank you, Jim.
Any more discussion? Sure. Okay. Uh, other discussion, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item three A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number one, three, four, four. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item four, consider approving ordinance one, three, four, five. An ordinance providing the amendment to the code of ordinance of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma by amending appendix A zoning ordinance sections two, zero, one dot one, four, zero, one dot three, four, zero, four dot one, four, zero, six dot one, and deleting section six, zero, seven and section six, zero, eight, providing for the rescinding of a gerd, gerd, urban gateway overlay supplemental district and providing for original zoning designations, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Item four A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number one, three, four, five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Okay. Item five, consider and take action with respect to resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirteen. A resolution of the city council of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, designated as the city approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Yukon Municipal Authority, the authority issuing its sales tax revenue note series two thousand seventeen in the aggregate principal amount of ten million dollars. The two thousand seventeen note waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the two thousand seventeen note to be sold at a price of par value by negotiated sale within the limits provided by title sixty, Oklahoma statutes, section one, seven, six, authorizing and approving a sales tax agreement providing security for the two thousand seventeen note, providing that the trust indenture shall be subject to the provisions of the two thousand seventeen note, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and procedures related to the issuance of the two thousand seventeen note and containing other provisions relating heretofore. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I do have an item, uh, with, anyone? Uh, on this right here, they suggested to us, and I don't think we approved the municipal authority one, saying that the option two of BBST was a part of the motion. Uh, I'm, I'm, would make that to be a part of the motion that we have here. Uh, is that correct? Do we need that, we need to have that in the motion itself now?
I would, Mr. Mayor, be on the safe side.
Okay.
Make sure there's no questions.
All right. So along that, uh, with that, uh, after the provisions relating thereto would be a, uh, on the condition or conditioned on, uh, acceptance of BB and T option two as our choice, uh, for this note.
They would have to amend the motion and those persons making that motion would have to agree to that.
Okay. Oh, wait. Oh, uh, John and, and, or John made the motion and Erle.
Agreed to the amendment.
Okay, Erle. You agree to that?
I do agree.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, both John and Erle agree to that and, uh, so I would want that specified in the, uh, minutes as well. Thank you. Uh, no further discussion? Vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
So do we need to go back and amend the YMA?
I'm, I'm thinking that we probably do. You know, do it. Judge, do we need to do that and amend the YMA as well?
I think that'd be advisable.
Okay.
Which clerk can he tell us who made the motion?
Can I take that, uh?
Richard made the motion and John seconded.
Okay, so, Richard and John, is that okay with you for the YMA as well?
Yes.
Mr. John, yeah.
Same amendment, yes.
Yes. Okay. And so, uh, I think we would have to vote on that.
Correct.
And just say that on item four A of the, uh, munis, Yukon Municipal Authority docket.
You would amend that motion.
We would amend, I, a motion of item four A to include the, the choice of BB and T option two as the choice for the ten million dollar note. So, uh, vote please on the.
Well, you need to make a motion to approve that amendment.
All right.
And then set first and second, then vote.
Okay, so we need to. Well, we've approved both guys here.
You can revise your motion to include the BB and T option two.
I revise my motion to approve the BBT second option.
Okay.
Can you second?
So therefore, uh, call for vote, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have also already approved, are we, we have approved.
We've approved number five.
Number five, is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. Moving right along. Item six, consider and take action with respect to ordinance one, three, four, six. An ordinance amending section two, one, three, seven, B of the code of ordinances of the city of Yukon by determining that certain obligations, including the municipal, Yukon Municipal Authority, sales tax revenue note series two thousand seventeen in the aggregate principal amount of ten million dollars, do not exceed debt limitations, repealing all conflicting ordinance provisions and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion? Do I see any, no discussion, okay? Thank you, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item six A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number one, three, four, six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Number seven, consider a motion to approve payment of funds to the city of Oklahoma City to allow for the repayment of the annual capital replacement allocation fee related to the radio usage agreement for budget year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, not to exceed thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars as recommended by the information technology director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item eight, consider approving a permit to conduct geophysical operations with CGG Land US Inc., uh, known as CGG, to conduct a three D seismic survey, including a permit fee of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents as recommended by the development services director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Councilman.
What's gonna go on in the town?
Uh, what, uh, CGG, uh, is proposing, and Johnny May is the project manager, uh, for diversified land management, what they're proposing is to come into the city limits with what they call mini vibes. They're doing seismic, uh, three D, um, survey in the city limits of Yukon. And what they're proposing to do is drive down the streets where possible in the urbanized area as well as in the rural area.
They're gonna, and do what?
Uh, what they're gonna do is geophysical, uh, survey of what's underneath. I think what they're looking for is oil and gas deposits underneath the town as well as the city limits that exist now. And they've got an area out here, it goes into Oklahoma City as far up as Piedmont, is my understanding. So I do have the project manager, Johnny May, here to discuss that, if you wanna know the exact, uh, boundaries of that, uh, survey that they're doing.
I- is this something that they conduct this type of survey or they have in other municipalities? I mean, is there anything for our, our homeowners or people who live in the community to be concerned about?
Uh, yes, it's, from what our research has done, we've, uh, determined that they've done this quite a few places, uh, in the United States as well, I guess, and other countries as well. Uh, they're using a smaller truck in the city limits of Yukon because the larger trucks can or possibly could cause damage, so the smaller ones do not, is what they have advised. And we actually have seen the truck and actually, uh, seen them demo it for us. Uh, if you'll notice, you know, to make sure that, uh, if we have any issues, we have an addendum to that agreement which covers, uh, reclamation, which would be damage to, uh, basically any of the city's, uh, improvements, streets, water serve. Uh, we also made sure that any damage that would be caused to residential structures is in this document, uh, trying to cover as many things as we can think of, as well as hours of operation, wet work. Uh, we're actually gonna have them give us a hundred thousand dollar bond as well that the city can draw against it if we have problems with the insurance. Uh, uh, we've actually re-emphasized again in the infrastructure to make sure any damage that may occur to city facilities too, as well as the schools and hospitals is addressed in this as much as we can. Uh, we did provide, uh, the mayor and, uh, I met with the city attorney and we had them give us kind of a, a document that would kinda outline any damage that may be caused or they feel like may be caused by these mini vibe trucks coming into the city limits. Uh, so this is kind of an outline of how it works and how, who they contact as they go through the town. Uh, if they notice damage within thirty days of that knowledge, they're supposed to contact, uh, CGG and, uh, provide that damage and they will send somebody out to assess that damage. In the document as well, they actually have a third party that goes along with them during this process of the mini vibes going through the city limits, doing the vibrations that they need to do for these, uh, this, uh- do for these, uh, this, uh, project.
Is it anticipated that some sort of damage will occur?
We are trying to make sure if by chance it happens, but Johnny May would probably be the best one to talk to about that and then we can talk about what we tried to make sure and cover in this document. Cause, uh.
Sir, you need to come up to the, this is a meeting, so we need your name and your.
Position.
I'm Johnny May, I'm the project manager for the CGG field office, and our office is located in El Reno. And this job is a two hundred and forty-three square mile job. It runs from just west of El Reno to Mustang Road, here, goes up as far north as Piedmont, uh, six miles south of Interstate forty, so it's, as you can see, it's, it's large. Uh, we've already been approved, uh, in Oklahoma City, we've already been approved in El Reno. Um, we're working with Mustang and Piedmont now to get a, an agreement in order. But the energy wave that we send into the ground, using our vibe trucks, does not cause property damage, okay? There is a monitoring service, a third-party monitoring service that we use that goes along, there's a national standard for what you can do and what you can't inside the city limits or anywhere else, okay? That national standard is for us to have, uh, what they call a peak particle velocity test, okay? Which means that we can't make movement of anything under the ground, okay? More than point three-five inches per second, okay? We drop that down to about point two-four, that's as high as we go, okay? So we have, now if we were, if we were drilling holes and shooting charges, yes, you gonna have damages, I'll promise you. With the vibe trucks, we really don't. I don't know of a claim that we've had in a city in the last ten years.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I don't even remember who did it on my farm.
Probably Dawson.
Tore the.
Sure.
Out of my farm.
Sure.
And I couldn't get anything out of it, and it was charges, but I don't think the charges did as much truck, trouble as the trucks.
Well, the problem that, the problem. Yes, sir, the problem that we have is that, and I hate to call names and cash at us, but Dawson's been in here ahead of us, and they've torn the world apart in there.
Oh, I thought, you know.
And they didn't, they didn't reclaim anything that they tore up, and they didn't make restitution for the damages that they did, okay? And it makes our job that much harder. CGG is a company that takes pride in leaving behind customers that are happier than when we got there, okay? And I don't know how to convey that to you, the council, anymore than just you, you just kinda have to take Mitch's word for it. He's done a lot of investigating, we've had a lot of conversations back and forth, um.
So no charges, this is strictly?
It's strictly a vibrasized job, absolutely, no, no hole drill, no charges.
You're not driving through our parks?
No, sir.
So it's all gonna be on the street?
All of it will be on the street, and the rightaways, you know, which is the little space next to the curb where we actually place our sensors, so that when the vibe trucks go through, the sensors take the readings, okay? And then once we get through, and, and we're talking about probably no more than two weeks to make our little move through town, but we do it in swaths, okay? And we, and we won't work every day, all day, de- depending on what section we need to get done to get our fold created, okay? And what we end up with is a three-dimensional picture of what's under the ground as far as minerals go. Uh, if there's an oil and gas formation down there, it will give you the top of it, how deep it is, how wide it is, and which way it's running. And what that does is that eliminates a lot of dry holes, okay? So that hopefully the city will have some under here and you can get some revenue from it, you know, um. Of course, like I say, we're, we're paying right at ninety thousand dollars, and that is based on the map that we used to start with. We might end up actually paying the city a little more because we have a standard fee for what we pay per acre, which is the property that the city owns that we will actually go onto, okay? The streets, we're paying two thousand dollars a, a linial mile for use of those streets. And we're set up right now at thirty-seven and a half linial miles. We may end up more, if we do, it'll adjust the payment. Uh, but we won't know that until you approve it, until we get our hazard survey people in here. The first thing that happens is, um, we have what we, the first thing we do is what we call a hazard survey. And what we do, the city has already provided us with shape files showing where the water mains are and the city sewer lines and all the infrastructure that's under the streets. And what we do is we go in, we mark that on a map, and we buffer away from it, because we don't want damages. We wanna go where we can to get what readings we can without causing damage to the city or any infrastructure that's in the city. So, having said that, we might use some more streets that we're not aware of, you know, as long as it's approved. Once we get that on our map with the buffers on it showing where we would like to go, it'll go back to Mitchell, who will then approve, or have it approved, whatever we need to do, to, before we ever come in the city. So it'll be agreed by the city and the Development Services Coordinator, whatever, where we go and where we don't. And it's strictly up to the city. If you tell us you can't go down that street, we won't go down that street, it's just that simple. Uh, as far as complaints, we have people who are with the crews as they go through. We will use, hopefully, off-duty policemen from here in Yukon that we pay to escort the crews as they go through. That usually helps us because people recognize the local law enforcement. And if the city doesn't have enough off-duty policemen, then we would use Sheriff's Department officers as well. So anybody that had a complaint or thought that they had a problem, there will be people there that they can go talk to while we're in town.
Is, uh, forgive me if I don't understand this, is there really any reason to come through the city? Because it's not like they're gonna drill a well through my yard, so.
If it was left up to me, I'd say no. Unfortunately, we have a job to do and the oil and gas companies want us in here, okay? And that's, that's the whole reason for us being here, you know, we're doing it for the oil and gas companies, and, uh.
I think I'll make a comment here because it's recently up in, uh, Kingfisher, just south of Kingfisher, they just recently hit a pretty big oil hole up there that developed into a pretty sizable amount of oil, and I'm assuming that's why they're looking for this, to see where that is. And in the advent of, uh, not just horizontal, but also now the, the drilling technique that they use for expanding out in different directions. All those people that have minerals, uh, on their property, whether even if it was inside the city, might directly be affected by that because it's, they don't have to drill a hole in your neighborhood anymore, they can go, I don't know what the limit is now, but Mitchell might know, but it's, it's a pretty long ways that they can drill sideways.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and that's, I think, what has brought all of this about, so. Anyway, I, I'm making it, because that's part of the, uh, part of the premise, I think, of why we're here today is to also say that there will be people who own minerals that could very well be affected.
Yes, sir.
Just besides the city.
Besides the city, yes.
Okay, well, while they're discussing, they're all, uh, Richard? Uh, anymore?
Was, was there any more information on this, did I miss it last week, or is this it?
I don't know, did you get the package on the drilling and everything?
When was that, last, two weeks ago?
You should've got the, the packet again, that has the insurance and the amended, uh, agreement that we did, as well as the pictures.
Was that last meeting?
We had it, it's a study session, uh, it should've been included in the packet you got today.
Was that that last study session?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Okay.
Richard? That's really important.
I mean, staff satisfied?
The attorney and I have met with them, as well as the mayor, uh, we hadn't actually met with them, but we discussed issues that we felt like we need to be discussed. Uh, the thing that was really discussed, that we was concerned about, that we increased the, uh, the bond that we could draw against to a hundred thousand. Uh, if we can't come to an agreement, uh, the hours of operation, if you'll notice on, uh, item seven, basically, uh, Monday through Friday, we're from seven AM to sunset, Saturday's nine AM to six PM, and Sunday, one PM to six PM. We tried to take in consideration those times that, uh, people would be sleeping, church, or other things, we was trying to take in consideration. Wet work, if by chance they happen to get on some city grounds, some city ditches or whatever, we wanted to make sure that was addressed, where, uh, if it was wet, they didn't get out there and leave the ruts, like I'm hearing Councilman Russell talk about. Uh, infrastructure, uh, we wanted to make sure that was covered again on item twelve. We made sure that, you know, if you'll notice through here, there's several times we talked about reclamation and so forth, where we're talking about, uh, any damage that would be called, caused to any public facility, basically, water serve, church, you know, any of that, uh, schools, offices, so forth, pools, we wanna make sure that was covered. Uh, one of the other things we wanted to make sure of is the insurance, that, uh, they provide us a policy. And we have that, and we have reviewed that, and the, the attorney has reviewed that as well. The, uh, the hold harmless agreement in here, you know, they're the ones that's gonna defend and be held responsible for any issues that would be caused from this, so we wanted to make sure that was in there. So we've tried to address everything we could in this, uh, addendum that's, or exhibit that's on B.
Erle, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Richard, how about you, are you, still got some questions there? I still have a couple more, too.
Go ahead.
Whenever you, you know, well, I just, uh, I had asked Mr. Horst and, uh, our city attorney for, uh, several reads on things, and, uh, they, uh, did some investigation uh, to make sure that there were claims hanging out there that we were unaware of and we were unable to find any of, of substance, uh, that, that are against your company. Uh, the, there was some question about rural areas, are you gonna use the maxi on, out in the rural areas?
No.
And that, or did the mini, everything will be done with?
If it's inside the city limits, we would use the mini-vibe.
Okay, so everything that we would be directly concerned with would be the, and also everything that's not directly in city limits uh, should be, for instance, the other side of the road, uh, would be handled with the individual landowner?
Right, yes, sir.
Right.
Any larger properties, uh, we, we deal with the private individuals, one-on-one business.
You know, uh, we, I, I asked for a, uh, the letter that you got this evening, the complaint form on it, uh, so that we would be able to notify people, I don't, uh, I just indicated a thirty-day window. Uh, certainly, resolution for somebody that lost something would need to be much quicker than that, I think.
Absolutely, I wouldn't hold it to thirty days.
You know, I mean.
I wouldn't put a time limit on it, sometimes things happen that don't show up for six months or a year. I've actually worked damage claims three years after I left the block, so it's, it, it doesn't mean that there's actually damage that we caused, but sometimes we just settle because we wanna keep people happy, so, uh, I wouldn't put a time limit on it of thirty days or anything.
No, I was, I was suggesting if you do find one with your quality people, that that's resolved with the individual person in.
Yes, sir.
You know, so would you give me a sense if you, somebody calls you up and says, I got a problem, your QC guy looks at it?
I can go ahead, step here, so.
In a, in a, in a perfect world, these guys, if they make a mistake, and people are, I mean, they're human, a- and they can make a mistake, driving the truck, maybe the brakes go out, you know, whatever. In a perfect world, if they made a mistake and, and rutted up, say, Taylor Park, or, or something here in town, they would come to us and let us know, that's in a perfect world. However, they don't always do that, that's why we have the monitors that go with them. That's why we have liaisons which work, crew support which work between the crews and the landowners, okay? So that we watch what they're doing, and if there's a problem, we will let you know, okay? Uh, not, because everybody, the crew that's actually gonna be here doing the physical work, they're a subcontractor, okay? They're not employees of CGG, they're subbed out. So CGG makes sure that they have people in place to safeguard the things in the city, and I wanna assure you that, that that will happen.
Uh, this, what was suggested to me was if somebody, for instance, has a water well.
Yes, sir.
That happens to appear, you know, there's a lot of country, especially in my ward.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, that, everything north of sixty-six there, if there were a water well there and you, the trucks came by and all of a sudden their water well, what kind of response would I get if their water well stopped working?
We would, uh, what we would like to do is have a, a third-party well monitor come in and check all those wells, including the city's wells, prior to us doing any work, and then again thirty days afterwards, to make sure there's no change in the flow rate, make sure there's no change in the quality of the water. We offer that service at no charge to a landlord, if they request it, so. That's there, and we would do that for the city also, on all your wells, however you want it done.
Our wells are in Oklahoma City.
Okay.
So you're okay.
You're not doing, you're not doing the airport, I think we're safe, yeah. Uh, and you, you indicated you're gonna put out, uh, door hangers?
Yes, sir.
On there, and, uh, is there a note on there, uh, that, uh, of a place for them to call?
Yes, sir.
And complain and talk to you?
That's a sample of what that will do. That'll also be posted in the newspaper at least four weeks prior to us beginning any operations.
I'm done.
And John, did you want to say it?
Yeah, I thought, oh, you did say it, there was one, okay.
Uh, we, uh, actually, normally you don't give us a hundred thousand dollar cash letter, is that correct? That, uh, in this case, we requested that?
Yes, sir.
And that was simply so we could deal with?
Yes, sir.
Anything that happened immediately?
Yes, sir.
You know, and, you know, we looked at, uh, well, I looked at it pretty hard, when will the hazard map be available?
We have scheduled for the surveyors to be here beginning, uh, August the first, so we can get them inside the city pretty quick and get it mapped and, and on the map to bring back to you. I would say probably at least by the first of September. We won't do any operations inside, we won't start physical operations till September the fifteenth, and that'll be starting in Piedmont, working this way down, so, uh, there, there should be plenty of time to okay, you know, our route that we'll be taking as we come through town and move through town. Uh, we'll, of course, wanna work close with the city as far as, uh, school zones, that kinda thing. Uh, we'll, of course, want to work close with the city as far as uh, school zones, that kind of thing.
Okay, and they're all.
That we don't.
Also in your bonding, you have up there that uh, there's one million per incident as part of the standard bond, is that correct? That's besides the, the letter?
Yes, sir.
That we have. Cause I, like I say, a lot of people have had claims in the past that sometimes, and not just from your operations, but have not been resolved quickly and, you know, that's something I really would like to avoid for this oper, you know, opportunity both ways.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and uh, Mitchell, I, I guess I'll give you a short, but you know, we've done a tremendous percentage, about seven and a half miles of pipe busting, but that means there's still quite a few. You're saying you're gonna be doing how many miles? Thirty-seven miles total within the Yukon City Limits?
Yes, sir.
So that says we're about a quarter, we're a fifth done of pipes and everything and so a lot of those pipes are pretty old. You want to talk about that for a second?
On the hazard map, once they provide that, we'll sit down with city staff and the city engineer and we'll discuss the locations and areas of concern. We will then mark it on the map and give it back to them uh, for consideration and distances we're concerned about in reference to those materials, water, sewers, storm, whatever it may be.
Not heard a hard number yet either on the distance away from the trucks, you know, is that fifty feet, a hundred feet, two hundred feet?
Normally, uh, fifteen feet from the center line.
Of the truck itself?
Fifteen feet from the center line is what they recommend, but uh, we'll do, we'll do whatever, we'll do whatever the city requires. Uh, if it's PVC pipe, you just don't have any problems. It's the asbestos, the clay pipe, the older stuff that we, that we're concerned about. We don't want to get anywhere around it.
Oh, you're not alone there.
Yes, sir, we're not going there.
You know, that's certainly in, in our community for this age, that's something.
The PVC, the, the newer stuff, the, most of the stuff that's been replaced now with the PVC and the, and the polymers, you just don't have any problems with it with vibe trucks at all.
Okay, so as far as we're concerned, we're only gonna see the smaller unit, not the Maxi unit at all?
Yes, sir, you will not see the big trucks in, inside the city limits.
Okay, I, John, anymore?
No, I just, I don't, Mitchell, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I mean, are you? How do you feel about this?
Yeah, well, from what we can tell and what we can see, I'm pretty comfortable with it. It's something that I've never seen since I've been in government, but doing research, there was quite a few other cities that uh, did similar with CGG. In fact, uh, this exhibit B, I've seen in a couple of other cities we were researching. We talked with Oklahoma City as well, uh, I talked to the attorney for the airport trust and they were very comfortable with it, but they do a little bit different permitting than we do. They, they have an agreement that they give to them instead of the agreement they give to us. Uh, did see the similar agreement in some Texas towns uh, down around uh, the Dallas area and south, so pretty comfortable from what we could tell. Not an engineer, but you know, and that's why we want, on the hazard map, that's why we're gonna include all the staff that, you know, public works, city manager, city engineer, make sure we try to cover everything we can before we just turn them loose in town.
Okay, thank you. Richard, anymore? Just Elaine?
No.
Okay, but uh, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it a lot. So I guess it's time for a vote, please.
Russell?
No.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smeistrle?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Okay. And let's see, uh. Item nine, new business.
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council discussion, Mr. Elaine?
I don't have anything.
Richard?
Not tonight, just thank you for being here.
John?
A couple of things, just uh, wanted to take it, opportunity, the chamber thanked us at the community coffee the other night for the council member, or the other morning, a couple of weeks ago after we had approved in our budget, uh, sun, funding for them, but I also would like to say thank you to the chamber for working with the city and all of what you do for the community and then also just a small business. Some of you, some of you guys know, I moved my office to Yukon and I got to be a small business person. I've, I've been, but I didn't realize until I moved my office and had to reset it up, everything that was involved and I mean, it takes a bit of courage, it's nerve-wracking, it takes a bit of courage, it costs money to do that and there's a I mean, I would say the vast majority of the businesses in our community are small businesses and I just wanted to say thank you and I applaud those people that have the courage to have a small business, that get up every morning and go to work and provide a service to the community and, and you know, the community gets a benefit, the sales tax and those type of things, but I want to say thank you to the chamber and thank you to the small businesses that work so hard to make this a great place. Thank you.
I agree too, I think we have a, a very good chamber. It's gone from a couple of years ago to where uh, we were struggling for a short period of time, we're back now, I think, over four hundred and fifteen members, something like that and, and uh, out of that, you can look around and see how many big box stores there are, not very many, so if it's over four hundred people, they've all got to be small businesses that depend on our community and I think that's, that's pretty nice. Just one other thing, I, uh, before we adjourn, uh, the, we're going to have a work session with the Spanish Coast people immediately following. And so for those of you who are interested in that particular topic and everything, uh, appreciate it if the council stays as well and and uh, we're gonna uh, talk over some uh, issues with the uh, Spanish Coast folks. So with no other business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.